I tell my kids, you don't judge somebody according to. Am I echoing now? What happened? You all right?
I don't know.
Yeah, you're so good. There we go. All right. So I tell them you don't judge somebody based on the color of their skin, sexual orientation, religion, anything. They can go online and find what? Thousands of people that will instruct them to do just the opposite. One of the things that people will talk about is is stuff that is pushed towards kids. So my parent and a foster parent, I have a lot of conversations with my kids about it's not appropriate for somebody to touch their genitals. Their private parts in an inappropriate manner. There's NAMBLA, the National Man Boy Love Association. The slogan is sex before eight is in two eight years old. So my kids are now navigating information that they've. I didn't have to navigate that. I didn't have to have my parents say, hey, respect your elders. And then come across the website that said, respect them, shoot them. So it's just changed to the point where nothing is bad. And we're 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 fighting a battle that we never had to fight growing up. No realistic supervision. Oh, that's we already did that. Nothing is bad. No filter by parents. So if you wanted to talk to me as a twelve year old girl, anybody who's watching or knew me growing up would say that if I was at school, I was probably in detention. So nobody got to talk to me. But as a twelve year old kid, if you wanted to talk to me. Is it not working? Do you want me to stop? Okay, so. Oh, okay. So if you wanted to talk to me as a twelve year old girl and I was at school, you had to physically be in the school. Right? I mean, you had to be a teacher, another classmate, you had to be in the school. And if you wanted to talk to me at my house, you called my parents' home phone and my parents answered and they got to decided who got to talk to me. It was this beautiful built in filter. What I like to do is when I go through a teenager's phone or even an eight year old's phone. And I I add up just one week of all the text messages, chat messages and emails they get over one week. And I say, okay, that's six hundred and ninety three. And I tell the parents, can you imagine going home on Friday and you open your mailbox and there's six hundred and ninety three envelopes to your child from people you've never met. In fact, screen names, you don't know who they are. And I wonder how many parents would say, honey, go ahead, just look through them and see what you can find in there. But that's what it is. We have the reason why we have sex trafficking with the youth. For four, almost five years, I co-chaired the Western South Dakota Human Trafficking Task Force. The reason why we have sex trafficking with youth is because there's no filter. They're not calling up the home phone and saying, hey, Dad, can I talk to your daughter? I would love to get her hooked on meth so she'll sleep with this guy and give me the cash. During our rally ops, we sell children like pizza. We don't put a twelve year old out on the street and hope somebody thinks she's a prostitute and hits on her. We go online and we post pictures of little boys and little girls and we make arrests every year. So what we see is is there's there's no filter. There used to be a beautiful filter and it was like the walls of the school. When a kid was in the school, that's what they did. And when a kid was at their home, there was this beautiful filter and now it's gone. Duplicity and anonymity. So if you have an Apple device, you have an iCloud account. And if you have an Android device, you have a Google account. I wish I could put up here a search warrant return for what it tracks. Turn off your location, it'll track what the speed limit is, how fast you drive, when you get up, when you go to sleep, what you eat, what you say, what you drink. Every time our phones walk by somebody, it exchanges your advertising ID. That's why when you sit down at a group of table with people and then you go on Facebook, it recommends us friends because our phones are always talking. So there's nothing that is anonymous, but our kids believe there is. So they get really mean, they get risky, they get sexual and they do a bunch of dumb stuff. All with the assumption that somehow they won't find out. Lack of real relationships. This one. This one is one of my, probably my soapboxes. It bothers me a lot. I was up at Perkins and I'm sitting here, my friend is sitting here and this little guy walks in, I don't know, ten or eleven years old and he's with the lady and I hear him say, over here, Grandma. I thought it's like a little grandma grandson date. It was adorable. And they sit down and I realized he had his little digital pacifier in his hand, his little tablet. The entire time he sat there, he says one thing to his grandma. He told her what he wanted off the menu in case the waitress came back. This is what this is what he looked like. This is what his grandma looked like. I wanted to walk over and just shake him and be like, all my grandparents are dead. What are you doing? The day she dies and somebody says, honey, your grandma passed, you won't even remember what you were looking at. It's it's. They forget how valuable people are, how valuable another human being is. And they clutch this piece of metal, plastic and glass. When we talk to the students, I always tell them the day my parents die, I'll regret every second I touched a phone in their presence. Every foster kid who's come into our house and left, my biggest regrets are times where they were just hanging out with me and I had a phone in my hand and I could have just been in their little world, just just loving on him and I had a device in my hand. Well, this is where things get weird though, is that they build silos amongst themselves. So I was making fun of kids because they they block each other for really dumb things. So it's like, why'd you block Sonia? Because she literally takes two hours to respond to anything. Oh, so you have a friend who doesn't respond in your timeframe. So you block her and find only friends that will respond within two hours. Why'd you block so and so? Well, they like my stuff, but they never comment on anything. So why even bother? I mean, if you're gonna like my stuff but never say anything. Okay, so they don't do what you're, you need them to do. So you block and you find people that comment. Why'd you block so and so? He is so lame right now. His parents are going through divorce. Seriously, he is the biggest pile of suck right now. So your friends' parents are getting divorced and he is miserable to be around. So you blocked him. And so they build these little silos in which people respond on time, respond in the right way, and the second they become convenient, they get rid of them. Somebody asked me what I see with adults. I said, adults, I'll have Facebook. So it looks something like this. They all have like five hundred friends, four hundred friends, and they have friends that they went to kindergarten with, right? They have everybody on there. And then they start the death spiral. Who did you vote for? Block nonfriend. Where do you stand on abortion? Block nonfriend. Immigration? Black Lives Matter. Protest riot. Vaccine? Masks? Boosters? Black Lives Matter. Do you think that this should happen? Block nonfriend. So with immigration, which should this happen? Block nonfriend. Well, how about climate change? So they go through all these things and then they end up with like forty people and it's an echo chamber. It's everybody who says exactly what, you're right, you're so right. I totally believe you. I am a hardcore, sold out for Jesus Christ kind of girl. I have friends who are hardcore atheists, hardcore agnostics, voted for Biden, voted for Trump. Nothing but climate change could care less about climate change. Fully vaxxed will never be vaxxed. All the second somebody disagrees with me, I'm like, sweet, let's sit down and have coffee. Here's the problem is that our kids are being raised. If the only people that talk to me and the only people I talk to agree with me. The problem is forty five years I've been wrong. I've been wrong about things. So if I can't have a discussion with somebody I totally disagree with, then what happens? I shut down any dialogue. If you've ever met somebody who was born to be racist and they something changed, it's like, yeah, somebody just loved on me when I hated on them and they had, what, conversation? Right? It's not, I've never talked to somebody who said, yeah, I was doxxed. People called me a bunch of names and then I changed my ways. It it was usually dialogue. So this is what happens though in law enforcement is when they build these silos. If somebody's getting raped or beat up and you're inside that silo, they might jump in and help you out. However, if you're outside that silo, we get to see the law enforcement in it. Why'd you videotape a fourteen year old getting raped? Hate that girl. Little Christian goody two shoes. Why'd you, why'd you watch that? Why'd you take that boy? Little gay boy? Yeah, I hate that guy. So you videotaped him getting beat up. And that's what it is. Inside the silo, outside the silo, and they determine somebody's worth based on that. And our kids are growing up to just lack the 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 respect for human beings. Digital heroin. So back in the days, now everything is digital and digital is wonderful. But here's the problem is that when it took that big leap from, we just had the dry erase boards and the chalkboards. It took this huge leap. There were people that made a ton of money, a ton of money on that technology entering the classroom. And when they they push them a little further and they said, hey, what do your kids think about that technology? Now, just just to preface. These are the wealthiest people in our country. They can send their kids to any school they want in the world. And they can give the the best technology. And this is what they said. The the these folks send their kids to the Wardoff School of the Peninsulas, which bans electronic devices for kids under the age of eleven and teaches the children of eBay, Apple, Uber and Google staff to make go karts knit and cook. So when you dig a little bit further, what they're talking about is they're they're referencing brain studies. So one of them, they're just talking about the addiction factor, right? So every time our phones vibrate beep, we get new Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok, political update, sports update, we get a little hit of dopamine, right? So dopamine, the same dopamine when it comes to sex, drugs, drinking, pizza, chocolate. So you have a kid and they're on TikTok or they're playing Roblox or Fortnite, Grand Theft Auto, and they're doing dopamine, 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 dopamine. Hey, put it away. And the brain goes through withdrawal similar to heroin withdrawals. So when we see shift summaries that say Dad took the PlayStation away and he destroyed the house looking for it. Dad found his kid's meth and hid it and the kid shredded the house looking for it. It has, I mean, it's crazy, but you can switch those out with heroin, meth, pain pills, the same kind of thing. So what we're seeing is that kids are becoming incredibly addicted. That's why if you don't have your phone with you and you feel it vibrate or hurt, hear it ring, that's that dopamine response. I always tell parents, watch what your kids ask for right after end of a movie, video game or their phone. You take it away and they want something sugary or salty because that's instant dopamine. That's their brain going, I need something. If you ever watched a kid go onto YouTube and watch other kids run, jump, build, explore and play. And you're like, what are you, what are you doing? You're watching somebody else play the video game that you play. Yeah. The sad part is is that their brain gets tricked into believing that they're actually having a good experience. Right? Because the dopamine's there, but then they're just sitting on their butt getting fat, holding a piece of metal, plastic and glass. So the people that build technology were like, uh-uh, I want my kids playing goat, making goat carts and then cook. The next part is, is if you put electrodes on a kid's brain and you say, hey, I just want to see what part stimulated. And I say, hey, kiddo, will you do me a favor? I want you to go downstairs and get me a pile of rocks and I bring them back up here. Their brain will light up like a Christmas tree because they physically walk somewhere, so they lights up. And then when they feel it, sense it, hear it, and they taste smells and they have thoughts about it, their brain all over lights up. And a month from now, when I say, hey, do you remember when I asked you to go downstairs and get those rocks? That pattern will replicate, like it'll just replicate where it's at. If I give them a tablet or a computer and I say, hey, I just want your avatar to go down, go downstairs and get some rocks, about that much of the brain? A month later, about a pea size. Just doesn't replicate. So the people that build technology are like, uh-uh. Because anytime your physical pages, smelling pages, touching pages. So there's, it's just something to keep in mind. I've heard a lot of parents say, I fight day and night to keep my kids off of screens and now they're coming home with a laptop. It's like, oh, yes, the future, the future. So why do kids make such great victims? They have no data limits. They have no data limits. I remember when my mom would tap her foot behind me, right? Because you couldn't be on the phone and the internet, which would be like, somebody could be calling because it took up both. They have no idea. They're desensitized to taking pictures. Kids nowadays do not buy film and they don't don't develop film, right? So they take pictures of their nose, like they take nonstop pictures. We would have got spanked had we wasted a roll taking pictures of our nose. Taking selfie pictures would, yeah, it just wouldn't have gone well. So when I get a device that belongs to an eight year old and they have four thousand images and videos. And you have little kids like six year olds that everything starts with, hey, guys, I'm back. Yep, because you're gonna be YouTube star. They just, they're, they don't get embarrassed. They know how to Google. My friends call, my friend calls me up and she said, my son just asked me what the word A-N-A-L means. And I said, what'd you say? She goes, buddy, she goes, where'd you hear that? And he said, on the bus, there's a little boy that watches and all the kids fight over who gets to sit next to him. She said Holly's nine. She said, like, he's not prepared to have a conversation. I'm not prepared and his dad's not prepared. She said, but if we don't have this conversation, he'll go on Google, which will give him pictures, videos and discussion. She said, so what do I do? It's like, because she have the discussion. Need for attention. So during the Sturgis rally, we will go online and we will go to chats that local kids use. We will put a picture of a ten to fifteen year old boy or girl, doesn't matter. Put something as simple as hate my parents and just like that, ten adult men. Doesn't matter, boy or girl, just like that. And so what we know is that kids need attention, they want attention and it doesn't take long before seeking attention leads them to other people. And then the backpack factor. When I was growing up and a teenager took their life. They went through their backpack. They went through their notebooks. They went through their bedroom. They went through their pockets. Now, when a kid commits suicide, they walk into our lab, they hand us the phone and say, hopefully you can get into it because nobody knows what's happening. I talk to parents that say, I didn't even know my kid wanted to play ball. I just happened to go through their phone and started looking and they have all this interest in playing ball. They've never even said anything out loud. Our kids' life revolves around that phone. So it's just changed the way we supervise. It's a change even with schools where you say, if a kid brought a backpack in and you said, whoa, you can't have nudie magazines in here and you can't have this in the school and you can't bring medicine that's not authorized in here. Now they bring in a phone and you look at the outside of it and it's hard to say what is inside. So let's talk about the digital footprint. When I take somebody's device, this is what it shows me. If I were to take any of your devices and take it back to the lab, it would show me all your online postings, social media, texting, photos, videos, blogs, gaming activities, search engines, websites and purchases. So I told you I'm a lab rat. I do exams for Homeland Security, FBI, OSI for the base. Every state, local, tribal, federal and military law enforcement in Western South Dakota brings evidence. Unless I go out on the search warrant or I meet with the child or the offender, I don't know them. But I can look through one phone and feel like I know that person. I can look through somebody's phone and right off the bat go, I can tell if they're married, if they're single, if they're dating, if they cheat, lie, smoke, drink, cuss, how many kids they have, who's their favorite, their favorite selfie look. Usually what size clothing they wear, their sense of humor, their political affiliation, sports affiliation, every medical condition they think they've had, their kids have had, their animals have had. I joke with my friends, but I tell them, give me your phone and I'll tell you your fears, your fantasies and what you believe are facts. Would you agree that we type things into a device that we would never say out loud? There's things that we search for, right? So I put these up here. If you look at the screen, in the blue column over there is a phone that I dumped. Now, if you were mom and dad and you were looking through Snapchat and you say, well, I can't look through all the messages because they're gone. I dumped that and if you look, there's six thousand one hundred and eleven messages that I went through. Everything that are in the white columns, that's on off a computer. Every incognito browsing, every website, every cloud storage data account, all the passwords, everything. Now you may look at that and say, Holly, the only reason why you have access to that is you have forensic tools and a search warrant. Every single company on there has all that data. That's how it works. We buy Microsoft products, we buy Google products, we buy Apple products. And you look, every time we install an app, we are giving them permission to every single thing on there. Now I'm forty five. I don't really care about my digital footprint, but I definitely care about our kids. I I care that our kids are coming up against this. We looked at who's gonna see that stuff. Teachers, parents, coaches, principals, colleges and universities. There's some quotes in the middle there. Penn State dropped another prospect due to a social media presence. Glad I got to see the, actually glad I got to see the real person before we offered him. SMU came across an awful Twitter account today. Shame the kid was a really good player onto the next one. Get a clue. We have kids that are busting their butts, getting straight A's, doing everything right, and then they're walking into a college interview. And they're bringing up text messages are not private. They are easily easily compromised. That's why two factor authentication with text messages is not the best way to go, just when it comes to security and all of that stuff. So you have kids walking into college interviews and they're bringing up text message material. They're bringing up stuff that is not posted publicly. They just, they're not from, in my personal opinion is, the second we give them technology, whether that's kindergarten, we have that conversation that everything is tracked. Everything is used, data is liquid gold because knowledge is power. So everything you do will be collected. So just letting our know, our kids know that before they start on it, that's what they're up against. Employers are no different. You can hire somebody and watch their moral compass unfold unfold in the workplace. Or you can pay a data broker and find out a little bit more about them. There's a, there is a quote, this guy said, you can, you can tell the caliber of a man by the way he speaks to his wife or significant other when he's mad. Does he belittle? Does he call names? Another one said, you can tell the character of a woman by the way she speaks to her closest female friends. Is she catty, mean, sarcastic? Does she talk about the weight and appearance of other women? If you hire her, she'll do that to every woman in your workplace. And I and I thought about that. I was like, I don't like the idea of our kids being this chunk of data, which somebody just kind of goes, hmm, no, we're fine. But unfortunately, that's what it is. I mean, they're they're being sorted, not because they meet them face to face, but because of what they're seeing. Strangers, online predators and data collectors. Would you agree with me that our, the kids' digital footprint has a life of its own? All right, so I'm going to, we're gonna talk about sexting. When we ask kids, within a month of school starting, we have sexting in all of our class, all of our buildings. The average age in our country that kids are exposed or kids start sending nude images is nine. There is nothing like working a third grade sexting case. It's just unbelievable. But when we ask kids, like, why are you sending nudes? To be funny, to impress a crush, loyal to your love usually are those guilt trip messages that when we read through it, it is, if you really loved me, you would. And then followed by them sending nudes. Part of dating. Part of dating. Seriously, why did you send pictures? Because we're dating. Why'd you smash? Because we're dating. I thought it was a teen thing. My my friend said this guy that she was gonna go out on a I thought it was a teen thing, my, my friend said this guy, that she was gonna go out on a date with, asked her for nudes. I said, well, shut up. I said, what did you say? She said, I said I'm fifty, like, nobody wants to see that. So alright, well, I guess it's, I'm just teens. Um but pressured by, pressured by boyfriends, girlfriends or other friends. As somebody who looks at child porn for a living, I despise looking through teenage girls' phones. The amount of requests that they get, and they'll talk about walking into classroom and somebody will say, you look nice, thank you, and they look down, send it. People in the class, people outside of the school, just random people. And when I've talked to middle schoolers that say, you get used to seeing naked pictures of your classmates and random people sending you pictures of their penis. Really? You just get used to, yeah, you get used to it. So I'm gonna play a video, I'm gonna see if it's gonna work, maybe if I could turn my. Sorry. Alright, just watch the video and I will, I'll do an interpretive dance. Alright, so this little girl here is singing, um just a little pumpkin and she's singing and they're telling her to be careful. For predators, like she just started singing and they said, be careful, there's pedos out here, okay? And within seconds they respond, show me, show color of panties, please, pull your shirt up higher. And um tells her so, she's so hot. And um she was, uh commentator said she was seven or eight years old. Now, if you're watching that video, she had eleven point nine thousand followers. We have kids in our school that can't find three people that will show up to a birthday party. But they go online and find eleven point nine thousand people that will follow their every move. And 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 capture everything and constantly engage with them. Um and this is where things get scary, because these kids wanna give attention. Um they wanna give attention, they have, and they put it out there, and then these guys will convince them to flash or um do it, whatever it is. Um to get that attention and then it goes to sextortion. Sextortion is not just sending nudes back and forth, there's some parents that will say, that's what I thought it was. Um but it's usually an adult pretending to be a kid, it might be part of a larger ring or a network and the threats always increase. So I'm gonna show, I'm gonna share with you in, I think it was April of two thousand twenty-one, feels so long away. There was a case that started with an eleven-year-old boy. Eleven-year-old boy is chatting with a thirteen-year-old girl, the thirteen-year-old girl sends him nudes. And he's thirteen, he's eleven, he's like, oh wow, check this out. And she said, you should send me some. And then this girl asked him to send a video of him playing with himself. And he says, I don't know about that, I'm not comfortable with that. She mentioned something about an Amazon gift card and sending some money, whatever it was that happened. This eleven-year-old boy decides, yep, I'm gonna go ahead and send that video. And just like that, this guy responds back and says, here's your mom's name, this is where she works, this is her email, this is all the stuff about you. Now he's, when I talked about giving a kid electronic devices when they don't know what to do with them, is like a loaded weapon, he's in over his head. About a month and a half later, he makes it a month and a half with the demands of this guy, daily demands. He finally walks up to his mom and he said, I'm sick of putting stuff in my butt for this guy, mom, you gotta make him quit. This is in Rhode Island, Rhode Island, they go to the police, they call, the IP trace comes where? Rapid City, South Dakota. We did the search warrant and we looked through hundreds of kids. Kids down, they had kids down to the age of four years old. He would tell them, you have a little sister, you have a little brother, you have a dog, bring home, get a hairbrush, get a marker, I want something different today, bring a friend. These kids were like, I'm gonna kill myself, leave me alone, and he's like, I don't care, take the video, um or take your life, either way, your parents are gonna watch this. It was the most psychologically damaging case I've ever worked. Um there were kids, we flew in kids from all over the country that sat in our federal courthouse across the street and got on the stand and said. I thought I was talking with a kid my own age. Within the last six to nine months, we've had a huge uptick in the, a kind of a change of direction. All, it's always been to get more pictures and videos, but just in the last six to nine months, it's been a pressure to get money. And they're pressured, they're going after young boys, uh like ten to twenty-year-old boys, so it looks something like this, they're getting the picture, video. And then they turn it around and say, I need a thousand dollars Bitcoin by midnight. You know about your kids, but my kids don't have a thousand dollar big, by midnight. And so what's happening at mid, midnight, is they are sharing those pictures or videos with everybody on their Instagram account. So in DOJ, when they sent it out and said, hey, when this hits, we're having kids commit suicide within an hour or two after that goes out. I had five phone calls within a month from parents that are like, uh my kid screwed up, this guy's demanding money, I am afraid my kid's gonna take their life, what are we doing? I'm like, uh, this is actually a known thing. It's out of um West Africa, out of Nigeria and the Ivory Coast. Homeland Security and FBI had to double uh tag-team it, cause it was that expansive. Um but see, this is, this is some of the stuff we talk about, is when kids get technology and get exposed and get in and over their heads. Um there's not a lot of information out there, they're not, um they're kind of getting in over their heads and then being left to fish themselves out on their own. So we gotta teach kids to stay in control. So here's my phone, let's just say, um I run over my phone in the parking lot, right? Smash it to bits, nothing works on it, I go down and I buy another Motorola, login with my Gmail account, what comes back? Everything, absolutely everything comes back, there's nothing. I do not text on this, take a picture, video, I don't sue, do anything on this device, then I'm not comfortable being on the front page of the Rapid City Journal. I just, teaching our kids that if they don't want somebody to see it, they simply cannot take it. Uh most of the kids when I talk to, they're more convinced that they should be worried about their parents finding out. Than college interviewers or job interviewers or things that down the road that they really care about. Um so teaching kids, like if you don't want somebody to see it, don't take it. Um Snapchat's very pro law enforcement and Snapchat, this girl was very convinced that she had never sent anything. Because she had taken nude images with Snap. And when the agent talked to her, he said, wait, did you take it with a smartphone? She said, yeah, and he, she said, did you take it with Snapchat? Yeah. He said, well Snapchat uploaded to the server, did the agent's skin filter flagged it as a minor, sent it to the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Who sent it to me and I did the IP trace that gave me to you and took a folder with all her naked pictures on her parents' kitchen table. And said, did you take it with a smartphone? You've shared it. So teaching our kids that if they're going to engage, whether they're bullying or using words or anything else. That down the road would be really hard to justify. And and whether pictures, videos, things that they send to other people, anything that they would have to justify in a college interview or a job interview. Um they can't forward bad things, they can't ask for bad things. And we flee, like we beg the kids not to start the habit. Believe it or not, I've had people come up to me and say, I don't think porn is as big as of situation as you believe it to be. And every time somebody has said that, um I work with a guy and and he always talks about like his first porn experience was in National Geographic. And he's like, and it's a breast and you're just, wow, right? And he talks about the VHS and, you know, doing the tracking, cause you don't know if it's an elbow or, you know, and he said, that's what his experience was, it wasn't readily available. And if you had it, you had to find it and do it in secret. Um I think of a guy that we sold a kid online, we sold a fourteen-year-old girl. And this guy shows up and I call him a kid, cause he was only like twenty-four, twenty-five, he was a kid. And he shows up and he tells the pimp, you can stay in the room and watch. And I was like, that's odd. In the interview, when they asked him why he wanted the, wanted the pimp to watch, he starts going into his pornography addiction. That he has looked at so much porn that nothing has any reaction. He said, I do darkroom dates where I just meet up with random people. He said, I'm not even thirty and I take Viagra all the time. He said, when you watch porn, it eventually just kinda wears off and then you gotta find something else, and then you gotta find something else, and he was like, I just ran out of stuff. He's thinking that if he gets a fourteen-year-old girl and is on Viagra and the pimp is watching, that it might just be enough to make him finish. In the interview, he cried and said, I wish I would have never looked at porn. And I think of him, cause it, and I wouldn't wish that on my worst enemy. I look at my kids and I'm like, I will do anything and everything, just because I've seen the devices and I looked at him, I was like, you're a kid, you're a kid. So we go into the schools and we talk about not starting the habit. If you start to trade images and videos of your classmates, like Pokemon cards, what, what are you gonna do when you're older? We talked to the seniors, the juniors and seniors. We arrested a kid two months after his eighteenth birthday. The nudes that they trade, when they're seventeen, we call it sexting, the day they turn eighteen, it's felony possession of child pornography. I don't think there's a lot of people running around and saying, hey, all the nudes that you have of classmates that are minors, the day you turn eighteen, it's felony possession. If you're gonna keep them, save them, store them, and it gets flagged, cause they're constantly monitoring, doing the agent's skin filters and monitoring data. There's not a lot of people that are saying, hey, just so you know, you, you can't do this. When we go in the schools, we, we are very, very, very um direct about that, don't start the habit. If you are in federal and state law, if you're eighteen years old and you are dating a sixteen-year-old, you can have sex with her. But if you record it, it's felony production of child pornography. It's federal versus state law. So some of those things, when we talk to the kids about when you get into a habit of making this a lifestyle and and just, everything is about trading images and videos or collecting them. It it ends up being to a point where one, you will never get enough and two, that eventually the content gets flagged. And then asking help for help if needed. I tell kids, like the first time somebody asks for nudes, ask for help, the first time somebody's bullying you, ask for help. Um trying to get them to know, like, teachers will listen, people will listen, uh they just need to ask for help. Other areas of concern, um hidden picture vaults, Raha, Yik Yak, Mai's only. They're all things that kids believe that gives them anonymity to do whatever they want. Um unfortunately, it's never that easy. Hacked cameras, that's Miss Teen USA, she is having a great life. And then all of a sudden she gets a message saying, hey, I have nude pictures of you, you're gonna do what I say. She said, scan. She said, I've never taken a nude picture and nobody's ever taken one of me, you're a liar, get lost. To which he replies, he sends her pictures and videos of her. He had hacked the webcam on her laptop and he'd been recording her for an entire year. Where do kids put these laptops at? They're in their bedrooms, on their dressers, right, and they're on all the time. Ninety-nine point nine percent of people will never have their microphone and their camera hacked, but kids are dumb. They download dumb things. Every time I see a kid playing on a, a person's phone, I'm just like, oh man. Because if a pop-up comes up and asks for that permission for stuff, kids will push whatever button gets them back to that game, right? So in this case, I, and I, if you see, I will slide it back here, I have a screen guard on mine. So if, when I'm not using my camera, it's covered up at all times. So it's keeping teens, cover up your screens, if you don't need them, cover them up. Not that most people have to deal with it, but teens are dumb. I say that in a loving way. Are there others concerned, this sexualized culture that they're growing up in? So the, the T-shirt in the middle is from Amazon, it's a screenshot from Amazon. And the little girl's wearing a shirt that says daddy's little slut. If you look closer, the, the shirt is only available for two to sixteen, two to six-year-olds. It's not available for adults, they finally got shamed into taking it down. Juicy written on the bottom of a seven or eight-year-old. Walmart selling a pair underwear that says, uh, who needs credit cards for five and six-year-olds? Pink, I, one of my friends wears a lot of Victoria's Secret and I always give her a hard time. She wore like purple hoodies that say pink or yellow hoodies that say pink. And so I was pressing her one day, I was like, what is up with pink? And she said, it's Victoria's Secret. I said, I understand it's Victoria's Secret, but why pink? And she said, it's femininity, it's like a girl's color, and that's why. And I said, alright, I said, go with me on this. I said, do you, do you think that Victoria's Secret sells sex appeal? She goes, well, yeah. I said, well, in our industry, when they say spread the pink, it doesn't matter what it looks like on the outside, it's all what? Pink? Pink is talking about genitalia. In erotica, in the world of erotica, when you're talking about hit the pink, spread the pink, show the pink, right? And we have little girls running around with pink written across their bottom and pink written across their chest. And unfortunately, what we're seeing is we're seeing a lot of kids growing up in that just very sexualized world of saying. It's not about the content of your character, it's not about who you are as a person, it's how many likes you get. It's how sexy you are, it's, it's how, it's how um what you have to offer in a completely inappropriate way. Filters, y'all seen somebody who? You look at them online and you look them face to face, you're like, you don't look like that, right? They filter everything, you just look and you're like, yeah, you don't look like that, they filter everything. I don't really mind when an adult filters their face and filters everything, but I hate when I see kids do it. Because this is what happens, is that kids will get so enamored with themselves filtered, that when you say, hey, you wanna go grab pizza? No thanks, no thanks, why? I can't filter face to face. Or you have a young man that wants to be witty and it takes him twenty minutes to come up with a witty comeback, right? And you say, hey, do you, you wanna go to the mall, you wanna go hang out? No, I'm good. Because he can't be witty face to face. Um the, we, we just went out on the base and there is eighty-six percent of the individuals on the base are aged twenty-six and under. And we talked about that, just that, that, the, the younger generation really living a very filtered existence of people being online, everything being online. And kids filtering who they are and saying, I just don't feel as comfortable face to face as I do online. Um Fortnite, Minecraft and Roblox, we had a dad call and he was very mad. He said, um my nine-year-old son is playing Minecraft, talking to some buddies at school. And all of a sudden, he said, he turned off the, he till pulled off the headset and he's like, hey dad, somebody just asked me for a picture of my pee pee. Said that if I sent one, he'd send one back. And this dad is just furious, he was like, this is my living room. He said, my wife and I walked by him all morning long, why would I think that he was some guy? We have cyber tips for Minecraft, Roblox, Facebook, Snapchat, TikTok, Instagram, you name it. Also, we know is that if kids are there, our, our offenders are there as well. TikTok, there's a book called Terms of Service and uh. It talks about not just the data compromise, cause that's a big issue, but what it talks about is the algorithms that's, that are set. So every country has a separate algorithm that's set up. So if you were to go to TikTok and you said, what's the algorithm to make money on TikTok in China? You would say pro education, pro government, pro ingenuity, pro growth, right? So if you wanted to make money and based on social credits, all these things. Well, then if you look at ours, that's where you see the TikTok challenges, the violence, all of these things, so that's part of it. Um my biggest concern with TikTok is when I watch the comments of kids. Um when somebody walks to my lab after we've done a search warrant and they're like, so Holly, how bad is this child porn? The response should be what? All child porn is very bad, all the child porn I look through every day is very bad. That should be the correct response, right? But when you've looked at over a million images and videos of child porn, you have a spectrum to draw from, okay? So when I see seven and eight-year-olds talking, you know the knockout punch, where you would just walk up and smoke somebody in the back of the head and they yard sale it? Okay, when I'm watching the comments of, it wasn't that bad because his teeth didn't get knocked out. And they're watching video after video after video and they're gaining a spectrum of just this lack of appreciation for human life. Just people, how about the lug nut challenge where you take somebody's lug nut off and then you fall them around to their car, wheel falls off? Um the Orbeez, where you shoot people in the face with Orbeez, they had what, eighty-two kids die in three months from that choking challenge? Where they try to pass each other out, but they're breaking the hyoid bone and little kids are dying. That's all part of that TikTok challenge. So it's not that, there's some great stuff on TikTok, but man, it's really quick. You can get into rabbit holes and kids will watch hundreds of videos, hundreds of videos. And some of them are incredibly targeted towards populations, it's just, i- it can get out of hand pretty quick. So what to do, save the evidence? Sometimes we only have our side and when people did delete it, because they're like, yeah, I just want it off my phone, off the computer, sometimes we're at a loss. Help them report it, set up new accounts, model the right online behavior. When I teach my kids how to cook, I talk, clean, box, whatever we're doing, Bible study, anything, I, I talk out loud. And what I'm seeing is that we're not, we're handing kids devices and there's no discussion. When I gave my mom a device, there was no discussion and then she thought she won the lottery and. I give her such a hard time about it, but it was just that same kinda thing, there's no discussion. So I'll tell things to my kids like, um, um, hey, grandma and I kinda got in an argument the other day. Um I kinda wanna go online and tell all my friends why I am right and grandma's wrong and what I said and what she said. And why they need to believe me, because what she did was wrong and what I did was right, and they need to know. And I asked my oldest daughter, what do you think, what do you think? And her head drops, she goes, you're, you're gonna hurt her. I said, what does a real woman do? You go over there, sit down, look face to face and figure it out. I said, that's right. I said, honey, when you have a phone, that's what you're gonna feel called to do, you're gonna feel the temptation to air family business, friend business, all your business online. When you're mad with somebody and you will wreck people in your anger. Um I make up things all the time. Somebody sent me a joke, making fun of the color of someone's skin. I tell my kids, you cannot, you cannot control what people send you. You will get some really bad stuff sent to you, videos, all sorts of bad stuff, but you can respond and let them know, I'm not down with that. What should you do? Give him the two thumbs down, the big angry. Give them the two thumbs down, the big angry eyes. That's right, that's right. Um, I tell them, like, hey, I was on Twitter, and there's people I totally disagree with. Should I light them up? My kids, yeah. Oh, never mind, you haven't listened to anything I have said. And I tell them, if you can't sit down with somebody and have an intelligent conversation with somebody you adamantly disagree with, do you believe by going on Twitter or Facebook and having a spat that somehow you're gonna enlighten anyone? You just add to the hate and to division in the world. So I tell them, like, either don't do it, or sit down and talk with somebody face to face, have good conversations. So modeling the right online behavior. Digital detox, we're in the business of taking away devices. Sometimes parents are not kind to us. Um, they plead with us that they can't live without their kid's device. What I love about the part when we give devices back, we talk to parents. Um, I had a mom share with me, she said, um, or the first one was the the dad, he said, you took away my daughter's phone, and it was the first time in three years. She agreed to go to a movie with me. It's like it just took taking her phone away. A dad said, my son found his skateboard, his bicycle in the outdoors within an hour. A mom shared with me, she said, my daughter spoiled rotten, like my, everybody loves my daughter, and birthdays and Christmas, like if you look around her room, she has so much stuff. But she doesn't do anything with it because she's got a phone. You took her phone, she's painting. She's making jewelry. And she goes on to tell me, she said, you know how everybody has like this thing with what they do with their kid? And she said, ours was cooking and baking. She goes, I don't even remember when it stopped. She said, but you took away your phone, and she's cooking and baking, like my chatty little girl is back. Um, if you know somebody you love that has been addicted to drugs or alcohol, and they get sober, there's something that you say. You say, I feel like I got them back. Right? When somebody gets sober and gets, I I I've said that with family members, like, I feel like I got them back. They're that person that I knew back before the addiction. That's what I hear parents say. Had a dad say, I forgot that, I don't even know when it happened, but when my kids got phones, we quit talking in the car. We used to chat in the car, right? You get kids, they're captive audience. He said, all of a sudden they had phones, and we no longer talked. So teaching our kids that they can live without it, we can live without it. My kids don't get any technology during the week because I love their teachers. If I give my kids this much stimulus, and then I expect them to go sit in a classroom, man, I love their teachers way too much for that. And I tell them, like, if this is where your brain is at all day long, or all night long, and then you wanna sit in a classroom, that's not fair to your teachers. So try to keep keep kids, like, I'll tell my kids, get dopamine in the backyard. Let's stop it, just go, just go. So starting the conversations, um, whether we're talking with kids or parents, setting the expectations. No, if we could get every single person to to agree that there's no electronics in the bedroom or bathrooms, a huge part of our cyber tips would go down. Uh, one for one, my kids do one push-up for every minute. Their technology, a total of twenty minutes, that's it. So teaching just, these are the expectations. The school has a list of expectations. We have plenty of the school district's devices in our lab for content where kids have broken those expectations, and sometimes kids are just naughty. Ask about fri- favorite apps and websites. This is a big ones for kids, schoolteachers, mentors. Man, it's mind-numbing when somebody's like, hi, let me tell you everything I love about Fortnite, but they'll tell you what that interest is. What the, what draws them, um, what they're looking for, av- if favorite apps or websites, anything they're seeing. Teenage boys are notorious for finding video links of people getting shot in the face, people getting run over, people having sex with animals, and then they send it to all their friends. Um, when I ask kids, have you showed your parents, like, did somebody send any of this stuff? The responses, they wouldn't understand, or I don't want my electronics. Like, every single one of us has has somebody send us stuff we don't like, so they'll understand. Um, personal information, this is a big thing. Joking, people joking about coming to see them. There was a girl that walked up to a school teacher, and she said, um, if somebody flew to Rapid City, where, what, what airport would they go to? The teacher's like, well, Rapid City Regional Airport. She said, I think he's coming. She thinks she's talking to a nineteen-year-old. Um, she's talking to a thirty-five-year-old, active military, hands-on offense, child pornography, and bookmark tickets on price line for Rapid City, South Dakota, for the price to drop. During the Sturgis rally, we were selling kids online, and there was a guy that was mad that the youngest we had for sale was twelve. Instead, if we could find one under ten, he would drive up two weeks, every two weeks from Texas. Twice a month, every two weeks, if we could find one, so he could have her. What we know is that kids chat with these guys, not in the comfort comfort of their bedroom, but never expecting anybody to actually follow through. There was a girl in Minnesota, a very small town in Minnesota. A guy drove from California, picked her up. She, he told her, like, leave your phone there, tell your friends you're heading out east, all this stuff. She got to Midland, South Dakota, walked in the gas station, and she said, I made a mistake. I wanna go home. I wanna go home, I made a mistake. He was taking her back to South Ca- or back to California. So teaching the kids that e- even if somebody's joking about coming to see you, if somebody's joking about your friend, or if your friend's talking about it, making sure they're reporting it. And when we're talking with kids that don't have anything, somebody saying, like, I'll give you five bucks for nude pics, ten bucks for a video. Uh, what we see with our young men is that the currency, they can roll somebody, they can, they can break into something, they can steal something. What's our young girls' currency? We see girls that are trading drugs, alcohol, everything for nude pictures, hooking up, that kind of thing. So having those conversations with our kids, with our teachers, with our parents about what our kids are coming up against. These are all the resources I'm gonna send out. And then in conclusion, we have to create the kind of environment that says, hey, if something happens, I want you to talk about it. I know you guys have not got this impression at all, but I am a little intense. Just a little bit. Uh, my parents or my kids will say that when I get angry, I have punchy eyes. You have punchy eyes, and I guess I have punchy eyes. Um, I tell my kids, if there's something that you need to tell me or Dad, and you think we would freak out, tell Grandma and Grandpa, K K and Uncle Brad, like, you tell somebody, I give you permission, you gotta tell somebody, you have to tell somebody. So creating the kind of environment, when we look at our schools for child sexual abuse in the country, uh, in South, or in in the United States, if a child is sexually abused, over fifty percent that do make a disclosure will report to a school teacher. I mean, that is the relationship that they have. So some of these discussions are with teachers that are saying, like, hey, I'm gonna create the kind of environment that says, hey, if somebody's messing with you online, talk to me. Talk, you you've gotta talk to somebody. Um, communication is everything. There is not a tool that we can put on that will monitor everything. There's just not. Um, I tell my kids, I am, I screwed up as a kid, you're gonna screw up, and I would rather you come to me after one picture, one conversation than ten. So just talk, um, have that conversation. Know the risks. If you see something, say something. And it really takes a village. My mom worked at Kmart for thirty-three years, and she built this underground network of people that ratted me out for everything. There was a reason I lived in detention. Some I got caught, and some people just ratted me out. And I'd ask my mom, who called? Just a concerned citizen. And so we used to kind of joke that she would just take my picture to Kmart and tell people, customers, hi, this is my daughter. You see her? You see her? This is my home number. If she screws up, if she has a look on her face like she's about to get in trouble, and round, like, random people called and ratted me out. Now, that's how I grew up. I talked to a mom whose daughter made that mistake of sending nude pictures to her boyfriend, boyfriend, spread them around school. And the mom said, there was a half a dozen moms who know her on a first-name basis that saw the naked pictures, and not one called. I got a chance to talk to some of the moms. I said, I don't wanna be accusatory. Just help me understand, like, what prevented you from calling. I didn't wanna embarrass them. I didn't wanna embarrass, like, I didn't want them to think that we thought that they were bad parents, or she was a bad kid. I didn't want her to know, like, how many people actually saw the naked pictures. In this day and age, my kids are twelve and under, they don't have, they don't have phones, and they won't for a while. Uh, when my kids have electronic devices, I will walk up to every parent I know, give them my cellphone number if my child asks for nudes. If my child's sending nudes, if my child is bullying your child, whatever, if you find out that my child is in over their head, call me, text me. Not gonna get mad, you gotta tell me. I would much rather have that scenario than some of parents' worst nightmare, when they come and they find that their child has committed suicide, and people knew a ton of things, but nobody wanted to pick up the phone and call. So we've got to build that village, and we have to create that environment that says, hey, I may not agree with you, and we may not be friends, but I care enough about you and your family and you as a human being to to look out for your kid. And then we always err on the side of safety with our kids. Um, people ask me, what's the age that you give technology? There's no age. Uh, I have two daughters, very close in age, and if you ask them the same question, what if you went to your friend's house and their dad wanted to give you a bath? One of them would be like, gross, I'm not getting naked at someone's house. I'd punch him out. Okay, maybe she can go and play across the street. She's just that kind of kid. My other daughter, I'm fully convinced that she could go to somebody's house, take a bath, and she wouldn't even think to tell me about it. That's just her demeanor. It has nothing to do with age. In our house, I tell my kids, you proved to me you can handle technology. If we have a PlayStation and you fight more, it's gone. If every conversation we have is about the PlayStation, it's gone. If every time I say to turn it off, guess what? It's gone for a month. I tell them, if our relationship, like, I love you to the moon and back, this is a piece of metal, plastic, and glass. If this makes us fight, it goes. So I just, having those conversations that I'm gonna err on the side of safety, and you proved to me. Um, and just giving parents that, giving them that permission, like, it's okay to be strict with your parents or with your kids, um, and take that stuff away. So I'm gonna open it up for questions. I hope I didn't go too far. Alright.
Anybody with questions?
That was a lot of stuff. That was a lot.
You may not be able to say, but um you did say something about having some of our own public school laptops, and what's the data on that? How many? I mean, what could you say?
I I could say that we have them from school districts all over western South Dakota.
Okay.
Um, just the the fact that sometimes it's secondary counts, sometimes it is, it can be school threats. Sometimes it is, there's pornography, or there's child pornography. You have a kid that's just recording themselves, and then, of course, IT doesn't want that replicated on the network. So just like any other device that contains prohibited content, it'll come to our lab to, and then we just work with the school district on removing it, and hopefully, um, getting it to a place that we're not having to just destroy um a device for that.
And you listed a bunch of um resources for parents, and you went over quite a few conversation, obviously, starts there. What can the school district do with our laptops as far as, I mean, nothing is truly secure.
No.
Right? But what could, what, are there any other filters that are more up to date than maybe our IT has at all times?
Um, I know that just across the, across the uh western South Dakota is the the region that we cover. So there's some that use Bark. Bark is free to schools. Um, I know I I have friends that use Bark, and what they really love is they, it runs an algorithm. So it'll say, your child sends an average of seventy-two snaps a day. They just dropped to twelve, check for the second snap. Um, another one, it was not the child that had Bark, but another child was um making threats about taking his life. And the child's device with Bark picked it up. That mom called the other mom. Um, it's, it's just a nice tool, but they offer it for schools for free. And it picks up anything that has to do with shooting, bullying, drinking, drugs, um pornography, sex, um, sextortion, anything, anything with harassment. There's a, there's a couple other that are very similar to Bark that just alert and say, hey, and it's meant to capture it. So let's just say you have kids using school computers to send nude images to each other. Um, if you have that, it's meant to grab it and isolate it before IT has to deal with getting onto the network and making a big, where you're actually uh backing up and backing up and backing down. So, yeah, it it it's tough because with technology, especially with Chromebooks, and that's what most of the schools in western South Dakota use, or Chromebooks, most of that is cloud-based, cloud-based data. Um, so it's really saying, Google, what are you willing to allow for supervision? So it's gotta be something that's used with Chrome-based and that cloud-based data.
Bishop Carr?
Thank you, Ms. Strand, for coming here. Um, this is the third time. Um, I've heard your presentation, and we had you at the church one time, and every time, I'm just left speechless of what to say and what to do. But besides that Bart, um, how do we balance in the district, we have virtual learning, we use technology for um for learning and the boards and all the different things. So how do we, are we able to use it safely? Because at this point in our, in our culture, we we have to use it. I mean, we can't go back to just a chalkboard, so how do we use it sa- more safely?
And and technology's not going anywhere. It's, it's a beautiful thing. You can be in two places at once. I can be in Hawaii and still be here. It's beautiful things that go with it, but um, I would say um, as a school district, deciding that one of the first things they do in in kindergarten is technology, there's technology class that talks about just how how to navigate, that every single thing you type is collected. And just getting kids to understand what technology is, um, what data brokers use their stuff for. Um, all of those things, I think of, um, wasn't it, it was a while back, Google got sued because they offer that to school for free, Google Docs for education, right? Google Classroom. And so they're giving this to all the schools in the country and saying, here you go, it's for free, and then they were data mining. So let's just say you have a thirteen-year-old girl who's writing in her journal about maybe some suicidal ideation or some other stuff in there. And then she saves that, and later on down the road goes out for the military, and that comes up. Do you see what I'm saying? Is that just for our kids to understand that, hey, if you're gonna type it in, you have to, you have to have the weight of everything goes. Everything comes up. I think that's a big part of it is teaching technology. And um, when I went in and talked to the kids as tech teacher, I'd I'd mentioned, um, my kids always saying Google that. And I said, do you just teach Google? And he was like, oh, you know, Google's a good tool. I was like, yeah, but Google, Bing, Yahoo, DuckDuckGo, pre-search, de-search. I said, depending on who is in charge, who has the funds at the time, your results get shifted, right? And whoever's paying the top money for the results. So I wanna teach my kids, look, if I want you to look and research a a certain kind of bird, I want you to be able to look at all of it out there. And that means I want you to wield that tool of a search engine. So um, that's part of tech class of saying, like, how do you ensure that if you're gonna research climate change, you're gonna try to find all of the research out there, um, which means I'm not gonna go to the same well over and over, and just give me what they have. So technology from little ones, NetSmarts does this one, and it starts with kindergarten. And it's like, all caps, if somebody said you want a dog or a PlayStation, they really cover the basics. And then every grade, they kind of go up and add a little bit more. So I think building that in, uh, what I find is that kids, like I mentioned, are so worried about their parents finding out, that they don't even think down the road. And I think um, some other schools have learned that if you don't have parents on board with this, they fight the schools more and more, like letting their kids on technology all night and then sending them to school. Spearfish has had us come out every year, and they have the laptop checkout night. And they tell the parents, if you don't show up and hear this information, your kid doesn't get their laptop. So you have to sit down and either watch the 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 video over, or you have to show up because we need you on our side. So um, building those kind of things that say the parents need to be educated, the kids need to be educated. And then a a mechanism that, hey, if something comes up, you need to, you need to tell somebody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Jamie, you may have some later if you watched it for the re-watch it. Yeah, yeah.
Do you, I did think, do you find, um, and I guess I was thinking kind of on a familial level, but even as a district, like, that if you were to set up kind of a reset, like, do you find a lot of resistance, like, like, okay, we've, we've gone a little bit down the rabbit hole, like, we need to come back and reset those, we talked about those expectations, and um, do you find that that's challenging, like, in a family, in a school district? Or would that be a reasonable, like, let's say, as a district, and I'm just throwing something out there, just theoretically, if we, you know, decided, you know what, there's some things we wanna reset, starting next school year, or whatever, we wanna do A, B, C, D, and E. Um, do you find that you see a lot of resistance from parents?
I think parents have been caught, more caught off guard by the, by the jumping forward. I wanna say it was in New Underwood. I talked to a mom, and she said, you know, we, all of a sudden, we went to all iPads. And she said, we live in the country, and she said, we never had um internet unless my husband was deployed. And she said, she'd asked the school, she said, do we have internet? We, do we have to have internet to do homework? And they said, well, yeah, she's gonna have to be connected to the network. And she said, she can come in earlier, stay late. And she said, so she's gonna be on screen all day, and then for three hours, either before school or after school, looking at a screen. And she, she was, she was like, what do I do with that? Because my kids are on a screen all day. Then they do the homework on a screen, and then I fight with them to get off the screen. And so I think that going back and resetting and maybe saying, like, let's talk about what that looks like. Let's talk about how much we do on technology and how much we can just do without it. Um, and I think, I think if parents were brought to the table to s- to to kind of weigh in on that, that might help. I think that um a lot of the parents now probably know more about technology, but there was a huge, huge leap back in the days. And and I see a lot of people my age that still never caught up. It went from like an MP3 player, right? And to, all of a sudden, the iPod Touch was the number-one device sending nudes with teens nationwide. And parents were still saying, no, 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 that's plays music and is their alarm. And you're like, no, that takes pictures. Um, takes pictures and it's hooked to to the internet. So I think even the education of saying, okay, let's educate, let's come back to the drawing table. Let's look at what we need technology for and what we can kind of sidestep. Yeah, it's a good question, though.
Mrs. Spiker.
And it's a, it's a huge overhaul.
Yep. So, thank you for being here. Um, you know, I think, I think having it recorded will. A lot of parents will care very much about that, and I know that you've been in many of our buildings and presented to groups of parents. And and I want to thank you for that. I want to piggyback off what Jamie said, because I think a lot of times, and you hit on it too. When we take a phone away at school, or we hear things like that, and we contact the parents. And say that we're going to turn the phone over to law enforcement or whatever, they're mad at us, you said they're mad at you. Um, you know, it's, it's this, they, you can't take my child's phone, they have to have it back. What do you have to say about that? Because, I mean, that is, that is conversation every single administrator in our district has had.
Yes.
Multiple times every year.
Well, and we have to, if if there's any, if there's any reasonable suspicion that there's child pornography on the device, it's got to be taken. Um, and so until that's determined, um, it's just like anything else that we take that a judge says, hey, if that has child pornography. Or we do a search warrant in a house, we have to look. It's, it's a tough conversation, because a lot of people, they don't have a home phone anymore, so that's that, that's that only connection that they have. Uh, I encourage, my response is a flip phone with a broken camera. And in, and when people start to argue with me about, look, my kid needs their phone, what does your kid need the phone for? Well, because they they play sports or they drive, that's fine, but this is a supercomputer that just happens to make phone calls. Right? If the only reason my kids need a phone is a, a flip phone is perfect. And so, um, I work one of the detectives, Detective Elliot Harding. He'd mentioned, he said, why is it when we tell parents, why do you give your kid a thousand dollar iPhone or a superphone? And they said, well, to keep in touch. And he said, but why did they let them keep it when they get home? And I said, that's a great, great question, and my kids are going to hate you when they, when they're old enough to have phones. So it's having kind of those tough conversations. When it comes to a judge's order to take it, or if we know that there's contraband, there's no question. But, yeah, we have those same arguments with, I can't live without it, they can't live without it, when is it coming back? Um, and unfortunately, if we cannot verify that there's not content on. It can't go until it is.
So the other thing I wanted to say is I read a really interesting study this weekend. Um, there was a scientific experiment done with, um. Routers and cell phones, did you hear about this? But they, they put, um, chia seeds, like, that grow, like, chia pet hair, whatever. These group of students, and they put one batch of these seeds in a, two exact rooms that were exactly the same in temperature, light, everything. One room had two routers and a cellphone that was constantly plugged in by the seeds. The room without any technology devices, the seeds bloomed and were perfect. And the plate with the seeds in the room with technology, it did not sprout, it did not grow. And they said that the students presented this in a science fair, and it got picked up. Because the students were like, I don't want my phone in my, I don't want it in my bedroom, I don't want it near my bed, you know, take my phone. I mean, like, keep it away, um, but it's like they had to see it, they had to see the results for themselves. Um, and I thought that was really powerful. And I think that when people hear your presentations and your talking, when we hear things, it, it's hard to listen to. I mean, it, it's, it's, it's hard to listen to. And, um, but like, I want every building in our, in our high schools and middle schools to run this, this experiment I read about. Because maybe, you know, maybe some people would plug their phone away from their, you know, bedside. Because I just wonder if it's not, if it's making seeds not grow, what is it doing to our brains?
Be a lot. It, we've had parents, even when we have that conversation about, where do you plug your kid's phone in at night? Well, on the kitchen counter. Well, if you had a heroin addict, would you leave heroin on the kitchen counter? Because we can see it, they come out, they take the phone, they go set alarm for four AM and put it right back on the counter, and the parents are like, yep, it's been charged all night. And of course, the teachers then see it the next day, because they're all, um, tired and lethargic. One of the things that, uh, we talk at the end of every, we do the middle school, high school. And I love when we get to the end, and I say, so, who in here has an awesome digital footprint that they are super excited for college interview or job interviewer to see? And there's kids that are like, and you can tell they are super excited, because they're, they're not doing anything wrong. They're not using language that they're ashamed of, and I always tell them, you'll probably make more money than all of us in this room, right? Because we all know that there's jobs that are six figures sitting open, because they cannot find somebody to hire that doesn't have garbage online that they can be dug up. And so I asked the rest of the kids, I'm like, so the rest of you with your pucker factor, where you're just kind of. I tell them, you know what the beautiful things about forensics? Is when I get on the stand and they say, when did the device turn on, when did they log on, when did they chat, when did they start, when did it end? I tell them, like, let's just say you go home tonight, and you write down, and you're like, okay, today's April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. You delete all your accounts, you, um, factory set your phone, you get a new iCloud account or a Gmail account, you do everything, reset everything. You have not deleted a single piece of data, it it's liquid gold, they don't get rid of it. If you turn from your ways and go on for the rest of your life, every job interview or college interview, you can say. You may find some stuff on me out there, things that I've said, pictures that I've sent, just dumb jokes that I've sent with my friends. But I challenge you to find anything after April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Why? Because I learned what I was doing was wrong and I stopped. It was like, it shows this moral, uh, just this, this ability to check yourself and change from your ways. Um, I can watch when somebody decides, like, man, with a porn addiction, and they put in covenant eyes, and and they're doing everything. Or something where you'll see a kid that tries to quit cussing, and you see all their chats, and all of a sudden, it's like, wow, what happened? I don't know, just, somebody told me I didn't sound very intelligent when I was cussing all the time. It's like, well, I could see in your chats that you were making a valiant effort. So teaching the kids, um, one of the schools in the Northern Hills said that there, the kids could not get to their lockers quick enough to start deleting apps. It's like, yes, for them just to understand that even when they delete it, they can walk into a college interview. And and be confronted on things that we've never had to deal with before.
Any other? Jamie?
Question, um, inquiring parent mind. So the, you know, there are the safer, like, the, like, the gizmo watches that don't have cameras, don't have. Have you seen any, like, dumps of those that you can speak to? That, because I know they're much more limited, but obviously, we think a lot of things are limited that aren't.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. I've never, um, the only time I've ever dumped a, for a gizmo, any gizmo device was an offender that was hands on. And he had access to the gizmo account, so he could track where the kid was at all times. So that's the only thing I had with the gizmo. Um, there's gab phones and bark phones, which are very limited. So a gab phone, you can't send pictures, you can't receive pictures, you can really limit things. Uh, most of those devices, we, we don't see a lot. Um, there's some, it's kind of odd, but there's some parental devices where they will monitor, I'm thinking like Disney Circle. Um, NetNanny, there's some that will, will monitor the device, but even if a child bypasses or goes around that. Um, it can make things difficult to do the forensics on those, we end up doing a lot of screenshots. Um, but, yeah, gizmo watches, I haven't. Which my parent, my kids are probably, or if I like, please, just give us, give us a device.
Um, I have a question and then two comments. So Snapchat, my eyes only, you can still get into that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And if a child tells you, if a child tells you that they forgot the password.
No.
They're lying.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, the thing about putting, uh, phones out on the counter. Um, my daughters are now out of the house, you know, twenty-two and and nineteen now. They mentioned many times that I had that put on the counter. They had either other devices that they bought off friends that were kind of broken, but still worked with wifi, didn't work with the actual signal. Um, that they still used. Secondly, the one that didn't have that would go out after we were asleep and go grab the phone, it had an extra charger in her room. So, and then would bring it out right before she had to get up. So, I mean, they do, they sneaky, they're sneaky. Um, and they, the last thing I'll leave people with too is with the Minecraft. Uh, my thirteen year old son was on it and was like, oh, I'm taught, I'm, how do you spell a certain word? And I'm like, who are you, who are you chatting with? Because you can chat with them too. And he, he said, oh, a friend named girl, a girl named, she's thirteen or sixteen. And I said, you know what, if you cannot go down the street and meet this person, they're not your friend. Well, they're in Kentucky, she told me, blah, 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 blah. And I thought, no, end the relationship right now in front of me. And he said, but I might hurt her feelings. I said, well, again, she's not real.
Yeah.
If you can't, you're not hurting anybody's feelings that you can't meet the next day to actually say, oh, I'm sorry about that, you know? So that's one of those things, do not friend anybody you can't meet.
Well, and it's interesting, because when I was growing up, if I mentioned Rachel, the chances were my parents knew Rachel and newer folks, you know what I mean, growing up in Rapid. But when you look through a kid's device now, there's two thousand contacts. So even when I'm just engaging with kids and they talk about a friend, I'm like, is that a friend you know face to face or a friend you know online? Because you're right, they they put them in the same category. Yeah, and each one of those kids on the stand got up and said, I thought I was talking with somebody my own age and.
Right.
Yeah, not creepy guy.
I don't see any other hands or questions. Um, very informative, always, thank you so much.
Invite, thank you for the invite. And if there's anything with resetting or anything that I can do to help, I am, any, always available.
We'll keep in contact. That's for sure.
Thank you. Do you want me to just put leave? Am I the host? I don't want to.
No, I don't.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'm good, I'm good, I can stand.
All right, any other other from board members? No. All right, I need a motion in a second to go into executive session for SDC L one dash twenty-five dash two point four.
Make a motion.
Deb? Ooh, that was close.
Michael can help.
Michael? All right, all those in favor, all those opposed. All right, we will have no further action after executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.